So by way of revision, you know, the weeks leading up to last week's session, you know, we were talking about prayer and before that we were talking about authority of the believer. If I'm honest, I wasn't, I didn't really plan to talk about prayer. It's something that just evolved from the authority series. I just saw that that was where it was heading. So I decided to go down that path and I think it was, at least I was blessed. I hope you all blessed too. So the natural evolution from the, you know, from the prayer topic is to not talk about God's nature. I remember Chrissie actually asking, you know, putting in a request some time back, if we could start talking about the nature of God. An incredibly important topic and without understanding the nature of God, Christianity becomes a little bit mystifying. It's kind of, we, yeah, we don't really know what you are doing sometimes. It's so important to understand the nature of God. Now, I'm not by any means suggesting that this is a topic we can exhaust. You know, it's not, it's not the case that, you know, that I have all the knowledge about God. So to be able to share it here is just a letter that, you know, I've, you know, I've been fortunate to have, you know, understood over the years. That's what I really want to share. And of course there will be an opportunity for you all to also share your own experience, your understanding of God, where this topic is likely to take us into different angles. Because obviously God is huge, you know, he, the whole of creation, all the universe cannot contain him. You know, he fills all things, that's what the Bible tells us. So I don't know how this series is gonna, how long it's gonna continue for, but you know, we'll be sensitive to the Lord and let him lead. So last week we started talking about the acts of God and we tried to, you know, understand, to interpret, to put things into context. One of the things that came across quite strongly even to me whilst I was teaching it, because it wasn't necessarily, some of the things that I shared, they weren't necessarily things I had thought about before. They came whilst I was talking. So they were, you know, they were news to me as well. And the Lord does that all the time. If one were to say, only say the things that he, you know, they are absolutely, you know, certain about, or rather they've studied very carefully, then many, many preachers would not open their mouth. The Lord, within each believer, there's the prophetic spirit. You know, there's the testimony of Jesus, which is the spirit of prophecy, which the Bible tells us in Revelation. So that prophetic is there in every believer. And when you start talking and you stop checking yourself too much. Because when I'm talking and I'm very self-aware and I'm very sort of anxious and I'm sort of worrying about what people are thinking about me, et cetera, I don't flow. I don't flow and when I'm not flowing, then I can't flow in the prophetic. I can't, the spirit of the Lord can't give me new ideas whilst I'm talking. But if I, you know, I'm able to relax and I'm no longer worried about anybody, I'm just talking, then very often things will come out that I didn't plan to say. And later on, when I go and check and study it, I say, oh, this thing's actually true. By the time that I was saying it, I didn't know. It felt true, but I didn't know with my head that it was, you know, I didn't have all the evidence. That's the nature of the prophetic. You step, you step out there by faith. You step out there by faith and the Lord comes through. I'm pretty certain that when Peter stood up to preach in Acts chapter two, you know, after the people asked, you know, when people questioned this whole experience of speaking in tongues and he said, he was just trying to explain to them, guys, these guys are not drunk as you suppose. But as he started talking, you know, scriptures were flowing and it was as if he had prepared that message, perfectly synced message and thousands of people gave their life to Christ. That is the spirit of prophecy working in the believer. So I'm sharing this also to let you know that this is not reserved for some special people. You know, the spirit of the Lord lives in you. And 1 Corinthians teaches that, you know, it's the spirit working in you and he chooses to work in one way in one person and chooses to work in another way in another person. But it doesn't mean that, you know, you can't flow in something that someone else is operating in because that same spirit is within you. So just, just a little word of encouragement there. And some of the things that were coming out were about the need to pause and reflect on the things that we read in the Bible about God. That if you read, if you read somewhere that God punished somebody severely, you know, struck somebody dead, or that he was very kind to another person, it's very important to not just, you know, just accept it as just, you know, passively, you know, just for your information kind of thing. But, but you just ask yourself, Lord, why did you act in this way in this particular situation? And in a very different way in another situation? God, I don't understand this. I need to understand it. And that's how you get to know God. As you ask those questions, you give him an opportunity to reveal things about his personality to you. So let's go into today's lesson proper. Oh, I can see there's a message in the chat. Let me just check what's going on. Welcome Pastor James. Yes, you're welcome to our Bible study Pastor James. I'll be able to talk at the end of the session. So we are talking about understanding God's nature. And many people have a confused image of God. On the one hand, they know of a God that is compassionate, that is merciful, that is kind. And that's the God that we praise when we go to church. God, you are good. Your mercies endure forever. Your truth endures for all generations. That is the God that we worship in our churches. But unbelievers, especially atheists, will point out to you that that is not a complete picture. That picture of God who is wonderful and doing lots of wonderful things, that's all good. But that's not complete. That is not the full picture. Okay? And then when you look at the bigger picture of God doing all the different works on earth, suddenly you find you have a problem. How do you explain it? Somebody was actually sharing the experience with me while they were watching or listening to one of the Bible study audio recordings and something was mentioned and a child was listening and the child said, that's not right. Because it was referring to something that God did. Or actually something that someone did in the Bibles, do with Phineas in the Bible, that, you know, he executed judgment upon somebody that was committing adultery. And he said, that's not right. Because that child is only familiar with one image of God, which is, you know, just kind, benevolent, wonderful God. So suddenly you throw in a, you know, a little bit of detail suggesting that maybe God is more than that and people struggle with that. They don't know how to reconcile the two things. They don't know if it's a different God that we are serving. And those questions are legitimate questions. Why should you see the same person be doing these two drastic, drastically different things? Okay? But you know, I remember another person sharing a story with me about someone who said, you know, it's, some things are unfortunate that they are in the Bible. They are unfortunate, it's unfortunate that they are in the Bible because they paint a picture that doesn't fit into our 21st century reality. I don't know about you, but in the 21st century, we have developed our own sense of morality that is devolved from the Bible. It is our own. And within this morality, people, you know, are good, quote unquote, you know, and they are wonderful and they are kind and they are... So you are seeing a certain kind of morality, especially here in the Western world. There is a kind of morality that you can actually, even though you are unbeliever, you can preach it. You can make a lot of noise about it. Because it's appealing, it looks good, but it's not God's morality. The people who push forward this morality coming from, in a very human, humanistic sort of morality, these same people will do things that will shock you. There are things that they will do that they don't see anything wrong with it. They don't see anything wrong. A very simple example would be abortion, for example. So as a believer, you would say abortion is wrong because you are getting rid of life. Now you will find an unbeliever who will not lie or at least frown upon lying. That's, that's a moral, that is, you know, that's virtue. But he will see nothing wrong with killing an unborn child. Because in that morality that he has developed for himself, it's okay. Lying is very bad. As a matter of fact, there was this lady who said something very, very funny a few years ago. She said she noticed that in this country, if you steal money, you are the... If you, how did she put it? She said, if you lie, or, or rather, if you kill somebody, they'll say, oh, maybe you were depressed. You know, you were depressed, you were not in your right state of mind and you killed somebody. But if you steal money or lie, they come after you. And she couldn't understand it because she said where she comes from. It's the other way around. You know, people steal money and lie all the time. It's if you kill somebody, that's a big deal. So I'm saying that just to point out that there is a sense of, there is morality that man has developed for himself. And that morality means that he feels certain things are right, certain things are wrong. And you know what man does? Man holds God to that standard. That's what we humans do. We hold him to our standards and we say, wait a minute, you did that, that was not right. When you say God did something and it was not right, what do you actually mean by that? Who determines what's right and wrong? If you say God did something and it was not right, it means you are saying that you had a standard that God has broken. That means, and that is a total misunderstanding of who God is. God is not subject to anybody's laws or rules. Do you know why? Because he created the universe. You exist because of him. A Greek poet said, "We live and move and have, in him have our beings." Even though he was not saved, he had that understanding to know that God is the one that actually upholds all things by his power. When Hebrews says, "by the word of his power." So it's a complete misunderstanding when we start holding God to our standards. We don't hold God to our standards. He is God. He is the starting point of morality. He is the one that told Adam, "Don't eat this fruit. The day you eat it, something bad is going to happen." Adam didn't know what bad meant. He didn't know what evil meant. All he knew is that there was a fruit. Then he ate it and evil came into the world. God is the one that defines what's right and what's wrong. And in Romans chapter nine, Paul addresses this question. He said, "Will you say to God that he is partial because he chose Jacob above Isol? He said, "Nay, but oh man, who are you to question God? He is God, you are not. He is the supreme leader, the supreme ruler, the sovereign ruler of the whole earth. It's from him that laws proceed. It's from him that right and wrong actually proceed." That's why a debate about the acts of God, whether they are right or wrong, that debate has no basis. Because which standards are we holding God to? Our own or his? The only standard you can hold God to is his own. You say, "Lord, but your word says this. How come you did this?" That's a valid question to ask, but not to try and hold God to our standards. So that confused image that we have, that difficulty we have with explaining things that God did in the Old Testament, that difficulty comes from the contemporary man creating his own set of standards, moral code by which he abides and expect God to abide by those codes as well. So it's like you are now having to make an excuse for a God who has broken a code accepted by the people. It's like you now have to go to the unbeliever and say, you know what? Yes, God did that, but you know, actually there was this and that. You know, you're trying to make excuses for God who has broken man's laws. But the question is, who are you to hold God to your standards? It doesn't work that way. So in this whole, you know, in seeking to understand the nature of God, in seeking to understand God's acts, we need to backtrack a little bit and go to the very beginning. It's more about getting to know who he is without holding him to any standards and just trying to understand why he did things the way he did and get to know him. But this is just by way of laying the foundation for what's coming. God's nature is manifest in his words, his promises, his actions, his judgments, his interactions with people. So last week we learned that if you want to... Okay, let me use a different example. I might have used that example I had last week. But you can film somebody, okay? Or you can take a still image of somebody, in other words, picture of somebody. And that tells you something about that person. You can also capture a footage of that person, a video footage. That will tell you more about that person. You'll find out about maybe some of their mannerisms. You'll find out about, you know, the way they walk, the way they talk. You would have learned a lot about them. Maybe you might even begin to see aspects of their personality. But you would be wrong to think that you know someone because you've seen a footage or a photo of that person. We understand that, we get that. Now it's very important that when we're seeking to know God, that we understand that certain things that have been revealed in creation and even in the word of God, they are like still images, they are like, you know, video footages. They don't reveal the full picture. God's nature is not revealed in full in any interaction with any one person. There is not a single person apart from the Lord Jesus who in his interaction with God was able to reveal God's nature fully. So when you read in the Bible that God did this in this particular instance, then he did something else in another instance, it's important not to jump to conclusion there. Because maybe all you are seeing is just a short video footage, like, you know, a YouTube short about God. Like a TikTok video about God, a short video, it doesn't reveal everything. That is why in understanding God, we need to take the whole counsel as has been revealed in the word of God. And even if we had the minds to grasp everything that is in the Bible, we would still struggle to grasp God in full. Because the Bible says that he fills all things and there's still leftover. So do you have a brain big enough to be able to grasp everything that's inside him? So that's so important. It's important that we always bear in mind that our knowledge of him will always be limited. You know, the four and 20 elders and, you know, the four beasts, as described in the book of Revelation, they cry, "Holy, holy, 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 holy." Why do they keep crying holy? It's not because they are just like a broken record, just repeating themselves. It's because each time they look at him, they see something. Each time they look at him, they see something they hadn't seen before. And it's like, oh my goodness, he is that big. God is incredible. So God's nature can be discerned in his creation. Romans chapter one tells us about it. The created things, the created, the natural order reveals something about God. There's something to be learned. It's the reason why nobody will be able to stand before the judgment throne of God and say, you know what, this is not fair. You are sending me to hell? What did I do wrong? And you never told me about yourself. Nobody will be able to do that. Because the plants, the animals, the ants, everything around is screaming. Every created thing has a message for humanity. Every created thing. And people have to literally block their ears to not hear it. People have to come up with theories to explain away the things that God has revealed in nature alone. You know, when you go into the countryside and you look at this and you just wonder, how on earth could such beauty emerge all by itself if there wasn't somebody, an architect behind the scenes making things work? How on earth? So the message is there, but people ignore it. But creation is not enough. And as we, we learned this at the very beginning of the Bible study, you know, in the first few sessions, that God revealed his nature in creation. But he looked, it was like, hmm, this is not good enough. You know, I've left my traces of my nature, even in the sun, the moon, even in, you know, the animals, the plants, I've left something about me everywhere. Now I was telling you a few years, I was telling you a few sessions ago about how I was studying, you know, I was in, I was in medical school at the time, studying, you know, self-physiology and the Lord started speaking to me about the Trinity using the material that I was studying at the time. Because he has left his signature everywhere. And yet God said, "That is not, that is not enough. That's really not... This is not showcasing me just yet." We said an artist, you know, artists like Rembrandt, like Leonardo da Vinci, Michelangelo, all these are great artists. We know about them because they left a legacy. What legacy did they leave behind? The artwork, the craftsmanship. They left all of this artwork behind. And so we look at the artwork and then we say, oh, we can tell something about this guy. Their attention to detail, their appreciation of beauty. We can tell all of, just by looking at the artwork. So when we look at creation, which is God's artwork, we can say, wow, what an artist. But that's not enough. God looked at it and he said, yes, it's great, but that's not enough. It's not enough. This is not showcasing me, you know, the way I want to be showcased. I know what I'm going to do. Let's make man. Remember when he said, "Let's make man," man didn't exist. So he invented a word there and then. "Let's make man and let them have dominion. Let them have dominion." And in that statement, what God was saying is, look, now I want to create a creature like me. So let us make man in our image. Let's make this creature like us, that's the Godhead, the Father, Son and Holy Spirit talking, having a discussion amongst themselves before creation, saying, "Let's, let's do this. Let's create somebody who's going to be like us." And let that person have dominion. But really, what God wanted, and you will see that, you know, through our plaster across the scriptures, what he really wanted was, let's create this person. Let's give him a free will. In other words, let's make him like, let him be, let him have the right to make decisions for himself. Let him have the right, let him have the same appreciation for beauty as we do. Let him have the same... Let him have aspirations. God has aspirations, did you know that? There are things that God wants to happen. There are things, they are all to do with mankind, of course. But God created us with aspirations. He created us with desires. He created, he created us to be like him. And he said, "Let, let this guy now be, let's watch. Let's watch him go about life as he makes his decisions, as he makes the choices. Let's watch." The joy of a parent as he watches his little child bouncing about, doing things and just watching your child go about life is entertaining for a parent. As a good parent here will tell you, you just watch the child and you're just happy. So God created Adam and even said, "Let..." God started creating animals. And when he created them, instead of naming them himself, he just brought them to Adam to see what, what Adam would, what name Adam would give to the animals. He wanted to see how his creation be making choices and manifesting his nature. This is all the beginning. This is all telling you about God's nature. He's the Father. Bible calls him the Father of spirits, all spirits. He is the Father from whom all things, you know, all things have their beginning, in whom all things have their beginning. And the Lord in creation was just observing the beauty. The beauty of bringing somebody into existence and watching that person develop and showcase your nature. That was the joy. That was the joy that the triune God enjoyed until sin entered the frame. And once sin entered the frame, some, you know, everything changed. But let's not get ahead of ourselves. Let's go step by step. God's dealings with, God's dealings with man, should be man, not God, as described in the Bible, span thousands of years and different dispensations. So we've explained how God reveals his nature through his words, his, you know, his actions, interactions with people, et cetera, et cetera. But it's not that everything that could have been revealed about God was revealed to one person. It's not even the case that everything that could have been revealed about God was revealed to one generation. No. Thousands of years. People were encountering God over thousands of years and that was being written down. What, how he was interacting with people, with Adam, with Cain, with Abel, with Noah, with Abraham. How he interacted with these people was all written down. There are hundreds of years, these people have mentioned, they are hundreds of years apart from each other. And, and it was written down their experience, God. Now those of you that are parents, you know that even though you love your children equally and you want to treat your children equally, your children will experience you differently, whether you like it or not. That's just the reality. Why? Because you're a person. And because you're a person, you respond to people. That's how persons behave. When you meet somebody that is cold, you... When you meet somebody that is cold, you also rein yourself in a little bit. When you see somebody who is more outgoing, more effusive, you will also open up a lot more. It's just natural. Your, your behavior matches the behavior of people around you. That's, that's what socializing is all about. If everybody is happy and you're angry, they won't want to be in your presence. So you, you, your emotions will match that of the people around you. There are certain people that will bring out certain traits in you. You will find some people, when they're around you, you're much calmer. And then some other people, when they're around you, you are, it's much easier to be, to lose your temper. People, we respond to people. People bring out the best in us or the worst in us sometimes. Some people that can press your buttons, just get you angry very easily. God is a person. And being a person means that he also responds to people. Now, don't, you don't get me wrong. I am not suggesting that God is, you know, just easily triggered, somebody that you can just go and manipulate, that kind of thing, you know, because, you know, he responds to people. But God responds to people. How people act towards him, you will discover that's how he is towards people. So, so when he found, pardon me, when he found David, he said, a man after my own heart. Go read about David. The guy wrote Psalms, hundred and something Psalms, expressing his relationship with God. You will not find a single person in the Bible, not even Jesus, who writes extensively about his relationship with God. When he's upset, his enemies are chasing him. He's happy, he's angry, he writes about it. And he brings God into everything that he does. Now, you wanna tell me that God doesn't respond to someone like that? Or God won't respond to someone like that? He will. Before the guy was born, God said, a man after my own heart. Somebody that, he hasn't been born yet, but I know we're going to have a good time together. That's basically what he was saying. I know we're going to have a good time together. Guys, God is a person. God is a person. And if you behave towards him tha- that way, when you start to make your relationship more personal, you will experience him at a level that you've not seen before. God is, God has said some things to me that have just shocked me. I remember when I was in Poland, student, you know, went through some very difficult times. Cause when I first arrived there, you know, uh, things were quite good. It was just shortly after, you know, communism ended nineteen ninety. And so, you know, things were good in a sense for, for us students, things were good because the scholarship, the stipend were being given was, you know, mu- was, was quite good. Was quite good. Everything was cheap and, you know, you could afford everything. And it was wonderful. We thought it was going to be like that. Then inflation hit. And the, the stipend did not keep up with the inflation. It got to a point, it was difficult to eat. It was difficult to, to, to survive. But the Lord provided in some wonderful ways. You know, I went to, we went to a conference in a, in a certain village. Quite far, somebody said, oh, there's these Christians there, let's, so we went and, and went for the conference. And me- met a, a couple there. And they just took me under their wing. It was like I was their son instantly. They wrote down their address, they said, come and visit us. This was not the days of, you know, um, mobile phones and things like that. Come and visit us. So one day we just went and visited them. They took us around all their friends. They, they gave me the key to their house. He said, whether we are in or not, just come. These guys looked after us in difficult times. So, we experienced the goodness of God. And I remember that there were times when I was going through some challenges and the Lord would just whisper to me, I've got you. I've got you, I've got your back. I've got your back. I remember doing a job and being quite frightened in that particular job because it was quite dangerous. And, and I was afraid that I'd be attacked. And one morning the Lord just said, I'll protect you. I'll protect you. And it was just incredible. It just made me relax. Personal relationship with God. God is a person. He is a person. You remember this story in Genesis chapter eighteen? The Bible says, Abraham looked on the horizon, he saw three men heading his way. And he ran out and he met them and he said, sir, please, don't, don't, don't continue your journey. You have to spend the, you know, I don't remember if he invited him over for, you know, it can have been the night. But, you know, he wanted them to come and experience his hospitality. So they came in and he cooked for them. And they sat there and, and, and he won't, in fact, he stood actually. Abraham was so respectful, he stood and as they ate, like a waiter, as they ate. And as they were eating, the Lord said, the Lord just started talking. The Lord said, shall I, say, shall I hide from Abraham what I'm about to do? I mean, can he, can he just imagine that? He's eating, the Lord is, comes to your house. This is the pre-incarnation. This is not Jesus, you know, in the flesh. This is the pre-incarnation. Comes and starts eating. Then starts talking, so where's your wife, Sarah? At the point at time, we will come and Sarah will have a child. And he's eating whilst having that conversation. I mean, I don't know about you, but that just does something for my heart. It just tells you something about his nature, just how personal he is. He came to Abraham's house from heaven to eat whatever Abraham had on offer. You know, the Lord, but to come to your house right now, you might have want to, you might want to dash in somewhere to go and get the most, you know, the choicest meat. He would be happy to eat whatever you have in your house at that time in fellowship with you. That's his nature. These things must be understood, these things must be pondered over. You, you've got to think about them. They've been written there in the Bible for a reason. So you can just pause and reflect, this is also God. This is also God, the God that takes, he runs the whole universe. But he was able to set that aside and come and visit one man. And have a meal with that person. You know, sometimes somebody invites you to come and do something, maybe spend, and then you are busy, you can't go. The creator of the universe, he had time for one man to sit down and eat with him. I mean, if he wanted to give Abraham some revelations, there's so many ways he could have done that. But look at what he chose to come and sit down and eat with him. God is a person. And the way you respond to him as a person, your understanding of who he is, your understanding of what's permissible will determine your experience of him. If you, he comes and you, you, you're frightened, you're hiding away, that's going to be your experience. But if he comes and you're going to sit down and eat with him, that's going to be your experience. When, you know, Jesus, um, when some people brought children to Jesus to, to bless. Jesus' disciples were trying to move them, where it's like, look, this is, this is a big man, you know, don't, let's not, you know, waste this time with, with children. So no, 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 no. Let the children come to me, for, of such, of the kingdom of God. Let the children come to me. That is, that is who God is. Informal, many of us go to God in a very formal, we're almighty heavenly God. We change our voices as we talk to him. Who do you think you're talking to? He was eating in Abraham's tent. Who do you think you are talking to? He is high and lifted up. But he also dwells with a contrite heart. He dwells with the humble. He will come and eat. Jesus said in Revelation chapter three, verse twenty, he said, behold, I stand at the door and knock. If any man will hear my voice and open the door, I will come in and dine with him, sup with him, have supper with him. That's God. He wants an intimate relationship with you. In which you can call him daddy. What's going on daddy? What, 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 why are things the way they are? You can just have a conversation with him because he is your daddy, your real daddy. There are things I could be sharing with you that are very, very personal, but I probably won't be able to do that today. But the Lord has spoken to me deeply on, on an emotional level and it, it met me my point of need. Are you an orphan? God knows how you feel as an orphan. He can reach down and console you. And then he will say, I can be your daddy. I can be your daddy. I can be your mommy. Because all of that comes from him. God is a good God. He's a great God. And Christians need to be confident in God's goodness. Christians need to be comfortable. They need to be able to say, you know what? I don't understand everything he did in the Bible. Some of the quote unquote negative things that he did in the Bible, I don't understand all of them, but I know that he is a good God. You need to be able to say that. If you have questions in this area, it will affect your faith. You need to be confident. You need to know that you know, that you know, that you know, that God is a good God. That he cares for you. That you can vouch for him, that he cares for. You know, Jesus said that if any man would deny him before men, then he will also deny you before his angels. But that thing looks like some very frightening thing. Let's break it down. Let's look at it in a different angle. Do you know God enough to be able to vouch for him? Do you know God enough to be able to vouch for him? You see, when he is personal, when you love him, when you care about him. And then somebody starts badmouthing him, or somebody says, can you vouch for him? Or somebody says, it is much easier for you to say, hey, 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 I know this person. But when you don't know him, when you don't have that relationship with him, it's much easier to shy away when there's difficulty. The early Christians, some of whom died for their faith. They didn't do this because they were more macho than the rest of us, or they didn't do that because they were stronger in the faith. I mean, yes, they were strong in the faith, but they were not special in any way. They were just ordinary people. The Bible goes out of its way to describe in the four gospels, to show you that these guys were ordinary. So ordinary was frightening. And yet, these guys, in the face of threats of death, they say, look, judge ye within yourself. Whether it's right that we should listen to you or to God. You, you make that judgment. We are not going to be doing that. What was it? That changed in the minds of these guys that they could make that statement. You know, people say, is the Holy Spirit, yes, of course. The Holy Spirit, when he was poured, when he was shared abroad, what did he do? He also brought them that, uh, he, they could experience the love of God. But that was not all. In their walk with God, they came to know God. They came to taste of his goodness. The way David said, oh, taste and see that God is good. That guy used to brag about God. He used to brag about God, David. Oh, taste and see. Do you know anybody in the Old Testament? They used to brag about God, like David. Oh, taste and see that God is good. Advertising God. It's like putting a God on a billboard. Taste and see, God is good. Bragging about God. Whilst he was going through persecution, while he was going through problems, he was telling people, taste and see that God is good. Why? Because he knew him. He didn't understand his sufferings. Sometimes you say, God, why do you shut your ears when I'm suffering? Why do you seem so fat when I'm suffering? He would say those things, but he would also say, taste and see that God is good. He knew God. He knew him personally. And that's what, that's my challenge to all of us. Do you know God? Do you know him personally? So that you can vouch for his character. You can vouch for him. You can say, I don't understand everything going on, but I know that he is good. Do you know what kept Job through his suffering? His friends were bombarding him with arguments. They said, look, you know God is holy. You know, he doesn't, you know, he doesn't suffer fools gladly. If you have sinned against him, you better solve this issue with him. Surely, your iniquities have brought this nonsense upon you. But Job, do you know what Job's issue was? It wasn't that he was perfect. It wasn't that he thought that, no, it's not possible that God could be punishing me because I'm perfect. No. He thought, but I have a relationship with this guy. I have a relationship with this guy, so that even if I have sinned, he would have told me. So, so Job said, I wish there were a daysman between somebody that can cruise between the two of us to pass messages. Of course, I'm, I'm in distress here. Job's distress was not just physical. Sometimes we look at that, we think, oh, he was afflicted with sores, et cetera. Man, he was in a lot of pain, he couldn't sleep, et cetera. That was true. His children were killed, that was true. His wife was stunting him, that was true. But that was not Job's biggest source of agony. Go and read the book of Job. Job's biggest issue was that somebody that he knew, that he, he thought he knew, that he understood, was doing something to him that didn't make sense. He said, no, 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 this doesn't make sense. This is, this is not in my Bible. How can he do this to me? But he's my friend. He's my friend. I know him. Why is this happening? In the end, when God came, yes, he showed Job, that Job doesn't know everything. But in the end, the Lord vindicated Job. Job had said the right things about him. Even though a lot of things he said were also in error. But his attitude stood way above his friends. Because he was talking from the perspective of, I know my redeemer lives. Job chapter nineteen, after going through so much pain, he said, I know my redeemer lives. I will not allow this thing to, to, to change my opinion. And even though the worms are eating this body, yet in my flesh will I see God. In other words, Job was not in bitterness, saying, look, I don't want to have anything to do with him. He was saying, I will see him. I will write through all of this, what I'm seeing around me that seems like injustice. I will write above all of that and I will see him and he will explain to me what's going on. That's called relationship. When you know him, things will happen. Challenges will come. Things will happen to you that don't make sense. You will sit there, you will crack your, you will wander, but if you know him, you will rise above that. And you say, no, I don't understand this, but I know God is good. Folks, this is what Christianity is supposed to be. Christianity is not a religion for singing and clapping. And, you know, you Sunday, you, you sing, you clap, you, you listen to a message, then you go home, eat your, your lunch and get on with your life. No. Christianity is about getting to know God so intimately that you are willing to vouch for him. Like that child that says, I know my daddy. Don't, don't, I know him. That's what God is looking for. So when the Bible talks about bearing a witness, witnessing for Christ. And today, witnessing, it means you, you, you cobble together a few passages in the Bible. Then you go to an unbeliever to try to convince him. When you are not convinced yourself, how can you convince anybody? When you are not convinced of his goodness, you're going to convince somebody. So to do what? When he starts asking you questions about things in the Bible, you don't understand that, you are confused. Cause your witnessing is about just peddling a few verses here and there from the book of Romans. No, let your witnessing be come and taste that God is good. Come, because I, I, I know him. Come and taste. That kind of testimony shakes people. They will look at you like, ah, this guy. A brother shared a testimony some time back. He said, um, this was, I think he was in Vietnam. And he was in Vietnam during the Vietnam War. And I think actually it was before they went, they were deployed, were being trained and everything. And I think actually it was before they went, they were deployed, were being trained and everything, when in camp. And there, there was somebody there who was, um. Taunting Christians. And because this guy used to preach, this guy used to mock him, say all sorts of things about Christianity. Okay, question, no worries. I've seen your message. He used to say all sorts of things about Christianity. And such, you know, sometimes some people can just make you feel bad. And this guy, he thought he had disgraced this Christian. But this guy was, you know, he just told, you know what, I haven't got an answer. You said this and this and that in the Bible, why did God is, he said, the guy said, I haven't got an answer, but I know God is a good God. I don't have an answer, but I know, I know my God is a good God. And this guy maintained his integrity. He did not start questioning what he believed in. He did not start feeling ashamed. You know, someone, one of the devil, the devil's greatest weapons is to make you ashamed, to make you feel ashamed. When you start feeling ashamed, you will backtrack, you will go back on the word, your, your word, you will, your testimony will weaken. And yet, boldness is supposed to be one of the characteristics of the righteous. But this guy maintained his position. And you know what? That guy who mocked this Christian came back to him when he was standing somewhere quiet. He said, you know what? He said, boy, I want what you have. And the guy said, you do? He said, yes. He said, I mocked you in front of people and yet you maintain your integrity. You, you standing by your word, you believe in this God. I wish I was like you. If somebody mocked me like this, that would be the end of my life. That person became born again Christian. Testimony. That is what a testimony is. It's like, this is my opinion about God. I don't care what you think. I may not win an argument over some of the things that are written in the Bible. You might come with questions, you might say this, you might, I might not have the answers. Fine, but I know he's a good God. That is no negotiable. I am not moving away from that. That's called a testimony. And when you stand by that testimony, the devil doesn't have a chance. He doesn't have a comeback from that. Because the devil wants to, want to outmuscle you with some logical arguments. Sometimes I, when I've watched some debates. On, you know, you, there are lots of them on YouTube, so very distinguished and, you know. High-flying atheists debating some Christians and making the Christians look like fools. And the audience, you know, going back home thinking, yes, this Christianity is useless. We, 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 you know, the, the Christian was downed and you know what? If that believer just stands there and say, you know what? If you want to have a, a wrestling match over who is smart, you've won it. Let me just give you the title, please. Just, I am not here to be smart. I'm not here to be smart. The source of all wisdom is up there. So if you want to win against me with your intelligence, let's not even start the match. You've won. I'm just here to testify that my God is good and I believe in him. Those things, eh, they knock the devil for six. It's like, what, what do we do with this guy? But if he can get you into some debate and things like that, that's when you start questioning what you believe in. God wants us to have a steadfast testimony about him, about who he is. Okay, let's go back to our slide. We took a very long detail. The acts of God are shaped by the circumstances in existence at the time. So we've seen that God spoke to people over thousands of years and across different dispensations. You know, where, 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 where we, we'll get a chance to talk about, you know, dispensations later. But across different dispensations, across, you know, a long period of time. And within that time, people had had different understandings of the things of God. And the Lord met them at their point of need. When God was with, um, Adam, sorry, Adam and Eve. Did you ever see Adam and Eve looking for an altar to offer a sacrifice to God on? No, it's not altar. There are no altars in there. There were no altars in the Garden of Eden. It was not necessary because God, this was just a father with his children. What you need an altar for? How many of you make a sacrifice before your parents? You build an altar and then you sacrifice an animal for your parents. How many of you do that? He was just a parent, a father with his children. He gave them some assignments. And then he was just observing them do their work. That was it. Folks, that was it. This whole thing called life, eh, this whole thing is called the earth. That was what it was all about in the beginning. The, none of the complexities that you see today were there at the time. And because they lived in a very simple setup, their relationship was also very different. No complexities. God didn't say, you know what, this is how you must approach me. First, you, you sing some praise songs, then you sing some worship songs, then you go into a solemn. You know, kind of a mood, then you will feel my presence. No, Adam and Eve were naked. They were not even wearing clothes. Imagine going to church naked. They were not even wearing clothes. The God would just come into the garden. You just start chatting, just like kids. That's how it was. That is how this whole thing began. That's how this whole thing began. And that was perfection, by the way. That was perfection. And that's how this whole thing began. So whenever you are thinking about, you want to know who God, God is, you backtrack. Go back to the very beginning, before things got complicated. And then observe, ask yourself questions. What was life like? How did God respond to these guys? When Adam said, I was naked, God said, who told you you were naked? I mean, what a question. Who told you what? How do you remember who told me? I've got eyes. Because they weren't supposed to know that they were naked, or rather, they weren't supposed to be bothered by nakedness. But it was, the, the conversation was all down to earth, nothing spiritual, not like, oh, Adam, you sin and. No, who told you were naked? He was responding to the person standing in front of him. God responds to you the way he is with you. He's different from the way he is with me. Why? Because you are different. So he meets you at your point of need. God is a personal God. He's a person. Learn to relate to him in a personal way. Don't try to imitate someone else. Don't look at your pastor and say, oh, my pastor has this kind of relationship. I got into real trouble doing that some time back. Looking at some brothers and sisters who looked so zealous for God. People could kneel down for hours praying. That, oh my God, I'm such a kind of Christian. I don't even kneel down when I'm praying. No, 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 no. This has to change. I also have to become as serious like these guys. Now started doing that, boom, God disappeared. I couldn't sense his presence anymore. Somebody that used to be at me, with me wherever I was, when I was eating. Suddenly, I couldn't sense him anymore because I was trying to copy someone else's relationship with him. Someone says they spent fourteen hours on their knees praying and God is present. Good. Let them enjoy that. Your reality may be different and God wants to meet you in your point of need. He will come to you. I mean, one brother put it beautifully. He said, if you are a mother of four, five young children. And you lock yourself, you don't have any other person in the house helping you with the children, you are the sole carer of these children. And you go and lock yourself in a, in a bedroom somewhere on your knees for ten hours. Because you want to, you wanted this personal relationship with God, he said, you are missing God. That's what he was saying. Because those, you, you want those children to kill each other whilst you are, you are there in the presence of God. Now, God will meet you in your point of need whilst you are looking after those children. He can adapt. He can come into your circumstances. That's what a personal God does. If he wasn't personal, then he would say, I don't care whether you have five, six children or whether you are busy. I want you to do what the pastor has been doing. The pastor who, whose sole job is to provide for the congregation. Maybe he's a full-time pastor. He doesn't have any other job. He is spending eight hours on his knees and you want to emulate that? You're going to miss God. You will tick off a box that, oh, I've prayed for eight hours, but you actually miss him. God wants to come into your circumstances. He adapts because he is a person. That's what a person does. A person adapts. He will adjust to you so that he can fellowship with you. God went to Abraham's tent. He didn't say, boy, I'm the king of kings and you're, you invited me and you want me to. Stay in your, in your tent. No, if you're sleeping in a tent, that's where I'm sleeping because it's you I've come to see. You see, he sat there and he ate. If Abraham was a vegetarian, Abraham said, Lord, I'm only giving you vegetables. The Lord would have sat down and eat. You want to give him meat? Let's go. That's God. Abraham gave God meat because that's what he thought he needed to give to him and God ate it. That is God. However, you want to serve him, he is able to adapt. He's able to come into your circumstances and enjoy fellowship with you. Just the way you are. I know I'm belaboring this point, but, but I feel that strongly that it needs to be said. Because I think some of us have got wrong notions about God. We, we have a religious notion of God. We think God demands certain rituals. Certain boxes must be ticked when he is a person. A person doesn't need that. When my friends come and visit, they come to me, they come into my circumstances. Come to see me in the kitchen, see me cook and we cook together, we eat in my own way. And they accept that. When I go to their homes, they do it differently and I accept that relationship. God is a person. Now let's go to another level of this fellowship. You see, because he is a person and he's dealing with you and you're a person. What you understand about him is so important. If you think certain things are not right, therefore you can't do it, that's what's going to be. Whatever you lay on the table, that's what he's going to eat. So when you go through the Bible, you'll see different people had different relationships with God. And it's because of their understanding, it was because of the level they were at. I mean, take Abraham, Jacob and Isaac. Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, I should say. This God said, I am the God of Abraham. I'm the God of Isaac and I'm the God of Jacob. What is Abraham's life like? God called him a friend. He went to his house, his, his tent and ate. You don't read anywhere where God went into Isaac's tent and ate. And as for Jacob, he appeared to him at Bethel. As a god sitting on his throne in heaven. Promising him protection, blessings, et cetera, his covenant. And Jacob was not even responsive to that. A very different relationship. Jacob, Jacob's response. Yes, he responded, but not the kind of response that you would have expected. Do you know what Jacob said to, um, God? He said, if the Lord will take me to my uncle's house, protect me, provide for me. And bring me back to my father's house, then the Lord will be my God. Well, read it. Jacob gave God conditions upon which he would make God his God. In other words, even though God was revealed, God was his, his father's God, God was his grandfather's God. Those ones, they have their own needs. Me, Jacob, I have to sort my material, my material needs first. And if you sort those ones out for me, you'll be my God. Do you know that God didn't complain? It was a bad response from Jacob, but God didn't complain. He took him. He protected him from labor, his uncle, who tried to cheat him at every, every step of the, every step of the way. And you know what? After a while, the, the Lord said to you, I think it's time for you to go back. Don't forget, we had a deal. I was supposed to protect you and every, it's time to go back. So Jacob went back. On the way the Lord came to, to wrestle with him, you know the story of Jacob at Penel, where he, a man came to wrestle him, it was God. Wrestled him. Jacob went and settled at Shchem. After he left labor, he instead of going down to where his father was, he's, he was so afraid of being anywhere near Issa. He settled in the north. And there, his daughter, Dinah, got into trouble. Only then did he realize, ah, I've got, I'm, 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 I'm going astray here. The Lord appeared to him again, he said, go to Bethel. And he went to Bethel and then, or only then from Bethel, he went south. To Beersheba where, where his father once dwelt. What am I trying to say? Abraham was responsive. He was in Mesopotamia when God said, go to a land that I will show you. I haven't even shown you yet, but go, I'll show you. And the guy was obedient. But Jacob, he knew where he was going. He still, he needed prompting to get there. But God still met him in his point of need. God still was God to him. God was still able to adapt and to come into Jacob's circumstances and steer him. He could still find a way to steer him to his purposes. That's God. In the end, he told Moses, I am the God of Abraham. I am the God of Isaac and I am the God of Jacob. I do all these things. Isaac was that son, that obedient son, who would not even resist his father when his father tied him and put him on the altar, ready to. To, to sacrifice him to God. He didn't even resist it. Like the way Jesus, like a sacrificial lamb, was led to Golgotha and killed. That's how Isaac was. He did not resist his father. He just asked, where is the lamb? The father said, God would provide. Okay. So he listened and he just went and obeyed his father. Laid down, ready to be killed. God was his God. But you have stubborn Jacob who would only do what he wanted, he wanted to do. He would, he would lay down the conditions for God. But as long as God could still see a way in to be able to fulfill his purposes in Jacob's life. The Lord would still be with him. What am I trying to say to you? God is good. And God is a person. And God is willing to meet you at your point of need. He is a personal God. He is not, he is not, um, he's not this rigid person that sometimes we make him out to be. He is a personal God. He's able to adapt. So we've said this already. God's nature is not revealed in one single verse or passage or, or book of the Bible. But in the whole of the Bible, God's nature is not revealed in full in his interactions with any one person. Only Jesus experienced the fullness of God and revealed God's nature fully. It is essential to treat the Bible as a whole when trying to understand God's nature. So these are all points we've established already. To understand the God of the Bible, we must start at the very beginning. In Genesis, God demonstrates his creative nature, his knack for design, his appreciation of beauty. God demonstrates his love for order in his systematic approach to creation. If God took a logical, rational approach, every action in creation had a clear rationale. He created the sun, moon and stars to provide light for the plants and animals. And to administer the times and seasons and control the weather. He made sure to create the sun, the moon and the stars before creating the plants and animals. Because he knew what, you know, that, that the plants and animals were going to need it. So he put the solution first before the problem. He created plants and animals with reproductive ability to ensure continuity of life on earth. Do you know how the Lord, you know, how he put it when he created the, 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 the plants? He said that let there be plants whose seed is within them. In other words, their reproductive capacity is within them. If it was as humans, I mean, you can look at the history of technology. You create something, then you, you know, then you realize, oh, we forgot this. Okay, then we create, oh, we forgot this. That's how man creates. That's how man creates. He creates, then he troubleshoots, then realizes the mistake, then he's, that's, that's, that's man's creation. God, right from the beginning, he knew. That for the earth to continue perpetually. There was a need for that reproductive capabilities to be already embedded. Within the created beings. That's why he's never had to go back and, 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 and fix things that he created. He sustains things by the word of his power, but he doesn't need to correct things that he himself made. There are, there's a lot that sin has distorted in the world and that's different. But I'm talking about what he created, he has never had to correct it. Because he taught it out, he taught things through before he made them. So in Genesis, I've shown you how God, you know, in his relationship with Adam and Eve, he was a very personal God. He was a father. But we also in Genesis discover God to be this artist, this, this, with this appreciation, you know, for beauty. God is benevolent. He created beings with needs and made provision for their needs. Imagine, you know, creating Adam and not providing any food. But Adam came into the world where the food was already there in abundance. And God had a grand plan for everything. He said, let us make man in our image according to our likeness. Let them have dominion over the fish of the sea, over the birds of the air and over the cattle, over all the earth and over every creeping thing that creeps on the earth. Conclusion, the God revealed in Genesis is an intelligent and benevolent God. Who likes to work systematically and with forethought. And I think I'm going to stop there. Next time, we're going to be talking about turning points, watershed moments in the Bible. There are certain times. In the Bible, recorded in the Bible, where things changed drastically. And we're going to start talking about those points for next week. Thank you. Now is the time to, you know, um, have a discussion. The time for us to, for you to share with me what you've learned and any questions that you, you may have, please. Feel free to voice them.
Yes, hello, you know, I'm using. So I was a bit far from the phone.
Ah, I see, I see. I see, yes. Is that, I, I know it's always difficult when you are the first, but, um. Um, do you have anything you want to share? Any questions? I know you've had questions around this particular topic. We, we attempted to answer some of that, you know, last time. Um, and I wonder whether you, maybe you have new questions. Um, or maybe you have a contribution to make. Yeah, please feel free.
Uh, yeah, it's difficult to be first, you know, like, well. We did it to everyone on call, I said, yes, um. I, yes, I had some questions, you know, I was asking about whether it is the same God in the Old Testament, you know. Uh, the same as the New Testament God, and I answered a very large question. And, you know, as we keep going along like today. Yes, you know, I. I, I, I have tried, you know, this personal relationship with God, you know. That is not like ritualistic and all those things. You know, it's because of. Um, the church, how we've been taught, you know. So it's like, it's become part of us. To extend that if you don't do those things, it's like, you know, you don't feel any, you don't feel any presence. And that, that is what I'm trying to work on, you know. And it, 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 it gets in a long world. I, I am. I am adapting to certain things and it's all because of this Bible study. I'm so blessed. And God bless you so much.
Oh, bless you too.
I, 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 you know, when you were, when you mentioned creation earlier on. I've had this lingering question about the story of creation in Genesis one and, you know, it's like it changes a bit.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know your take on that because sometimes. I wonder why in one it says something different like that. That a man before God, then God before man, creation before material, you know. A bit of confusion. But I know it's not like the topic, but I know that maybe. As we go along, you touch on that.
Okay. I mean, the, the Genesis account, um. I think you, it's kind of, there's a style, the kind of a literary style in Genesis. That is quite, that is quite unique. Um, in the sense that. You, like you have chapter one, where everything is laid out, you know, the whole of creation is, you know, and, and. And God, you know, calls different things into being, then it eventually gets to man, you know, and then. You have chapter two where it provides, he provides more detail. So there's kind of overview and then you come to chapter two. So for example, in chapter one, it's like, let us make man. But then he says, let them have dominion. Straight away, you, you notice that the, a, a, a pronoun, a plural, in the plural, in the plural is used. The plural form of a pronoun is used, suggesting to you that when he was thinking about man, he was actually thinking about men, people. Okay, not just one person. By the way, in the Greek, the word for man is Adam. So Adam became his name, but actually, I say in the Greek, in the Hebrew. Therefore, the, the, his name also represents, you know, all of us. Okay, so, so there's that. So you then come to chapter two where he talks about male and female, made he them? And then it seems like a contradiction because he said, let's make man, then he made Adam. And then suddenly in chapter two, he's talking about, made he them? And, and that, that kind of literacy that you find actually is not just in Genesis, you'll find in other places as well. There's a summary statement and then there's a breakdown. And in chapter two, you get to see why that, that, that actually Adam was made first. And then Eve was made. And then there's a whole process there. So it's really not a contradiction, it's more about. In the proverbs, when you're reading a proverb, you see, um, six things have I, you know, discovered, yeah, seven. And then you're like, is this six or seven? That kind of thing. It's, it's, that one is a poetic style that, that, you know, that was used there. But in Genesis, you get, you, you see first of all, overview and then a breakdown. And there's really no contradiction, but maybe I can, I can take time to explore that a little bit more with verses. So that maybe it becomes clearer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Good. Um, who wants to go next? Sue? I can see a new name. Oh, okay, Sue, hi. Fire away.
Evening, yeah. So for me, I think it's that whole. Um, personal touch to our experience with God that, um. You know, a lot of times, we've always felt like there must be like a format to your coming into his presence. I think that a lot of it was picked from, you know, the Old Testament where there were written, like there were standard things that needed to be done before. Even the high priest could go into the presence of God. But, um. I've come to understand from today's lesson, the fact that. God will, will come in, in, in his form, in, in the form that. I mean, or the relationship, how you built the relationship with him. It doesn't have to have a format or anything like that. You, you just have to. Build that relationship with him such that when he comes in, when, when he's around, you would know. When, when, when he's not around, you would know. It must get that personal, rather than a religious, um, activity that we, we go through. Thank you very much and God bless you.
God bless you too. Yes, that's, that's very good. That's a very good summary of, um. Yeah, what we were talking about. Excellent. Um. Welcome on board, Joyce. Um, we haven't seen you here before. We're really pleased that you, you were able to join us. I don't know if you want to unmute yourself and say a word or two. At the same time, if you don't feel able to, please feel free to type something in the chat. And that would also be perfectly, okay. And Irene, do, do we come to you next?
Hello, um, good evening.
Good evening.
Forgive me, I was in and out of class, but I think.
You've been playing true and.
Yes, I have been out of class, honestly. But, um, I'm, I'm, I'm glad with the new like series that you have started. I think it's going to, um. Let us have, we, of course, we, we, we can know the full nature of God, but at least by. This, we, we understand certain experiences in the Bible and, um, it will get us closer or open our eyes. To see God for who he truly is and to see his intention. In certain situations in the Bible. I'm glad that you're going to talk about, you know, the watershed moments that you have. Um, written like the rapture is something that for me, even though I went to Bible school a bit. I still don't understand, you know, there are, there are certain areas in the Bible that we are even going to talk about it. It's almost like, it, it, it's a sacred place. You don't go there. If you don't have, they'll tell you if you don't have a lot of knowledge about. The end times or, or the rapture, you don't even say it, otherwise you go into error and you say all sorts of things. And so I'm glad that you have given yourself like to study the scripture because I think that there, there's a lot of, um. Misconceptions or, for me, I don't fully even understand the sequence because. From the author's background, we only know that Jesus will come for a second. I mean, we, we, we know of an event called rapture, but nobody really talks about. It's or, or because they feel that they are not knowledgeable enough or they don't have revelation enough to talk about the book of Revelation. So please, um, I know you come to that, but please, um. If, if, if you haven't thought of telling us or teaching us, I am pleading that you, you tackle that aspect. Because sometimes, even students in my class, I have Muslims and like Christians alike. And sometimes we are going to talk about like certain things of that nature. You don't know how to approach it. Um, well, because they, they also have their own view of how things or the sequence. So you should know it very well before you can, you can talk about it. So I plead that you, you, you tackle that. I've seen a lot of things here that, that coming classes will be interesting too. We will stay tuned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yeah, by God's grace, I mean, I didn't, if I'm honest, I put the rapture there. Um, I was really, really planning to talk all the way up to, you know, like maybe really major on the first three points. But I put them there because I felt like I needed to put them there. So it's, it's interesting that you've picked up on one of them as being something that, you know, you find interesting. But of course, we need to, we need to know more about the rapture, we need to understand it. Paul taught, taught about the rapture. Um, he spent a very short time in, in Thessalonica. And yet he managed, on top of the gospel that he taught them, to teach them about the rapture. And, and he writes about it in First Thessalonians and then in the second, Second Thessalonians, he writes about the second coming of Christ. They are two separate events, but it doesn't seem like that to, it doesn't seem so to many people. Um, and, and the Christians debate this, this topic all the time. There are some that say, um, there's only one coming, I mean, one second coming. And there are others that say there is a rapture. But you will see from scripture, it's not, you know, my opinion. It's, you will see clearly from a scripture that there are two separate events. And the rapture is a very exciting one, which if it were to happen in our times would be, it would be glorious. Um, yeah. Okay, good. And let's come to you, Bishop.
We, I, I try to absorb whatever we have here. It's so amazing. I don't think I have much to say today.
Okay.
I just want to go back and, you know, listen to it and play it over and over because there's a lot of. Uh, gems here.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, thank you too. And, uh, good, um. Yes, um, I think we'll, we'll finish here. Um. And we'll meet again next week, um, same time, seven PM GMT. Um, once again, you're welcome, Joyce, and we hope you'll be able to join us again next week. God bless you for joining us. Okay, so have a lovely weekend, all of you, and I'll see you next week.